Right.
Hell's Kitchen is not as bad as the name.
Right.
It's actually a gag.
The second.
Well, it's seven.
Okay.
So let's get started. And welcome, everybody. Welcome particularly our new town administrator. And don't be kind to her because this is her first, uh, first meeting with us and she has been searching for files and other information which are well hidden somewhere. So she may not have all the answers that you're looking for, but she will certainly file them for you. We'll start off with Chief Jenkins.
Wait, I don't know if she mentioned, there's a couple of things that I want to add to the agenda. Is that, should I just do that as new conference?
Let's get through the, let's get down to the, to the.
Just do that later?
Like this, I had mentioned before that we would like to have the agenda complete by Thursday so we can go out on Friday to everybody. And these extra things that I've been lenient on work sessions. So this, this is it. Okay, this time we'll do it, but can you incorporate them when you give one of your reports on either?
Yeah, so I did, I did send them out way ahead of time. They just never made it. But yeah, I could incorporate. I, I, I contacted her about that.
Let's try to get, let's try to get the agenda settled by, by Thursday at
Yeah.
five o'clock so we can go out to everybody.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah.
And they stayed for the, uh, the regular meeting too.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It just, it's very helpful then, you know, because it gives,
people see the agenda, it gives them all the time to prepare to answer any questions that may come up because of these added, uh, topics. So let's start with Chief Jenkins.
Mr. Mayor of Council, thank you for having me this evening. Just a number of thoughts for service, significantly called service that the police department responded to this past month. Uh, we responded out to a public from the road. And Alamo's, uh, probably screaming for a male subject that attempted suicide. Uh, he had been using meth all week and thought that his wife was, uh, deceased. So he decided that he was going to attempt uh, commit suicide. Fortunately, uh, he was transported by rescue to the hospital and survived the incident. We also responded to the, uh, the Irish road or stolen vehicle that was recovered. The vehicle was stolen in Buckingham County the night before and jumped out along Irish Road. One suspect was arrested in Buckingham County. Also, a group was involved in a minor vehicle crash involving, you know, a year jumped out of the, uh, the Woodline fence area out on Jim, wherever the road is to the roadway. And, uh, here's the one about building a mile and a half. So there, most of the impact is a foot chopper, but it did call a small plastic piece to break out of a lower part of the vehicle. So I don't think we need to, uh, report that insurance. I think we can get that all to Chief. Uh, we assisted ACP with the final one domestic suspect was arrested with domestic assault battery by ACPD. And we also investigated, uh, some subjects that were throwing the levee drops over the ridge down in the, uh, campsites over here down along the river, broke a femur, uh, fatal. Uh, the victim does not press charges, but this week we've been getting some complaints from some of the community members about a number of boys coming into the town. And causing some of this havoc. Suspected that these boys may be involved. We were able to catch them on video at a couple of different places on two events. I encountered them last week, I think it was Thursday. And, um, had an opportunity to talk to them. One of the kid's mom showed up and, uh, the two boys confessed to throwing rocks over the wall off the bridge down with the campsite, but then I've been meeting with them since, uh, last week and I think they have had second thoughts about whether or not they did it or not. So we're trying to figure out truth. But anyway, we attended the field day at Scottsville Elementary. And the beginning of summer event out of the hot prairie. Thank you. We were there to thank them. Uh, we assisted with the, uh, the festival, no issues there. One of the like council and, uh, other members know that August 5th, the Boys and Girls Club parking lot will be hosting a national night out event this year. Start time will be six o'clock. Well, so we officers, you can see donated a hundred and six hours of their time to the police department this, this past month.
What happened to the chairs?
What's that?
Any chairs?
Um, department news. July 4th, uh, it was a busy day for the police department. You had a club call for service in the town. And it looked like the, uh, thirteen call for service in the town. We didn't lose heavy records this year. Help us secure streets thanks to Tommy Scholl and, uh, ATM Tony. We did have two vehicles try to reach the security perimeter for the early. We had our drone in the air, we were able to spot them.
What does that mean?
What's that?
What you just said, what they breached?
They tried to drive into a brake route.
Okay.
We had the drone in the air and was able to spot them as they started into the route and were able to stop them. What we learned was that, um, these two individuals after our investigation, we called them on the, uh, cameras of, well, Irish Road, four seconds apart, come into the town. They both split up, one circled around over into the tavern lot and tried to come through the braid route there at the, uh, entrance taxi of taverns. Got him stopped. North Carolina plates on the vehicle said he was trying to get to South Carolina. And then while the drone was still in the air, we see a vehicle come down third street where we had it blocked. And that female got out and walked around the police car and then went into the crowd. We had a deputy, uh, encounter her. She said that she was from South Carolina trying to get back to South Carolina. Uh, if everyone remembers, that was a day of protest. So we suspect that we've sent the information, compiled the information to send it to the, uh, the, the, but we suspect that they were probably trying to test the parameters to see what they might be able to, uh, don't know if it was a protest that they might have been planning or what it was. But we were able to, uh, ford them off and get them revalued around the, uh, braid route. We didn't have any more problems. We did have two subjects that were taken into custody that day. We did make a final offer to, uh, Officer Eric Davidson, the, uh, position police officer, and he accepted, uh, this is actually his site. We get the academy started last Monday. New police vehicles has been at Dork's Communication being built. The, uh, in car and body camera has been set down for them. Uh, that's the last piece of equipment that needs to go up to the new vehicle. Uh, yeah. So I'm hoping within the next week or two, we'll be able to get our new police vehicle.
Chief, I just want to interrupt you for one second. I want to say thank you. I was trying to understand what you were saying there, but maybe if I correct me if I'm incorrect about this, but there certainly was news that there could be concern nationally or internationally on July 4th.
Yes.
And I, from what I hear you saying is you were aware of that and you were paying attention. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the town.
Yes, sir. We were checking all of our services, through Union Center and different places, uh, just to see if there was anything specific to Scottsville and nothing was showing up on radar specifically. But as we all know, the pop-up general, uh, demonstrations that can happen anyplace. And anyone knows Scottsville, this is a very big event for the town on that day. So we were, we planned with heavy records to block the streets. I think, um, it really opened my eyes when, uh, had that vehicle impacting New Orleans and the people, the person drove down the streets and injured and hurt a lot of people there. And I didn't want that to happen either. So we were able to, uh, solicit Tommy Scholl and ATM record. And got their heavy equipment down here to help us to block all the streets. So it would be very difficult for someone to enter that frame route at her.
Well, I just, I thought that's what you were saying, and I just wanted to say a special thank you because as much as we would like the larger world to not even know Scottsville exists, it does. And I'm thankful that you, we're all thankful for what you've done. So thank you.
Uh, this drone was a huge help. Helped us pick these two people up at different locations. Um, not exactly sure why they were trying to get into that braid route, but they were pretty insistent. I need to get through here to go to South Carolina. So anyway, it may have been done, but it was just, um, all circumstances, just about.
Well, as you said, the odd, the oddness of it doesn't add up. And when it doesn't add up, you know that on something.
Doesn't add up. Uh, so Eric is at the police academy. The fifty thousand nine hundred and twenty dollar check has been written back to the town for these premises. At the Police Department Foundation, that check has been given to him. Nobody. So the foundation is square with the panel on the vehicle. I did submit the five ninety-nine grant application. Uh, haven't gotten notice yet of it. It's applicable, but it's sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Suspect it will end up getting that grant. But we'll also notify that we did get the, uh, equipment grant from DCGS and, um, I've already ordered, so the, one of the premises behind that grant was, uh, get those AVs and those computers forward and in because, uh, we need to spend that money by the end of September. So that's all been done. Uh, so we're just waiting to get the equipment. I'm not sure. Nobody, have you sent the check to the AD folks yet or not?
Not yet.
Once the check sent to them, they'll ship us our AVs in that part.
Well, we have one in each vehicle.
Yes, sir. Good. I'll have an AD in each police car. Uh, no few car purchases, uh, this past month. And we, and let's see, any questions on the calls for service stats? Anybody know?
I want Eric to be at the academy.
Always.
Sure, he'll start next fall. He'll start full-time next fall here in Scottsville?
He's already starting fall.
But I mean, is he?
He's on the street.
Oh, he's on, he's on the street already. Oh.
He's at the police.
Oh, but.
Be there twenty, twenty-one weeks.
Right. But when's he going to be actually in Scottsville?
He'll be in Scottsville soon as he finishes the academy, first week of December.
Oh, that, wow.
Do field training.
Wow.
Field training officer. And, uh, I mean, that could take eight, ten weeks. So, you know, we're probably looking after the first of the year before he'll be ready to work the street all the time.
So the two of you will be pretty busy here.
Yes, sir. I think that's all I have.
Any questions?
What do you mean? What did we count? Was the doll still sports journal?
They weren't forced to turn.
They voluntarily turned them off.
So what they did was, um, before each department that had flock safety camera was able to share that data in and throughout the United States if the department chose it. Charlotte still chose to just leave it with Jenny. But now I think they've had some concerns from their community and they just love, just their department. State law change. If council remembers back several months ago, we decided as a group that we were going to retain the data for thirty days. But state legislature has decided that now departments can only retain the data for one day. And you cannot share the data outside of the state of Virginia. So that's kind of where we're at with the flock safety.
And you have that occasion where you share it down outside of the state of Virginia and almost accessible.
I know we've shared it in Virginia and have been successful. Um, you either murdered a case?
Uh, somebody was up north. I don't want to say Connecticut, New Hampshire, something like that.
I can't remember. Yeah. I'm sorry.
So there's a state law center, the police department from different states cannot share information with each other.
I just know in the state of Virginia, we can't share other states. Those are fun.
Yeah, but how, how do you do the useful aid or work with other states? You say you have somebody who made a step five, we know the vehicle, we need to use these cameras, you can pick them up. I mean, if they're looking for North Carolina, they fly through, you know, like coming up fifteen, you say they can't say, well, the vehicle you were looking for.
Can't send them, we neither there, can't give them access. I, if they were to call and say, hey, was this vehicle in your town, we can search it and maybe get a little information, but we couldn't share pictures or anything. And we couldn't, let's say you were a police officer in Michigan and you had flock safety cameras and you requested Scottville to share their data with you, I could get yes and share it, but now today we can't.
One of the things, Chief, I will say I'm thankful for all that you do and I it grieves me how we tie the hands behind police officers' backs across the country. It grieves me that we do that as states, as cities. Thankfully, we don't do that in Scottsville, but it's very, it's very burdensome to me that we are approaching serving the public that way. Thankfully, we're not defending Scottsville. It's grievous.
Well, fortunately, we have a town council that supports the police department. And we, uh, we talk about all of the challenges that are facing the police department and together we've worked through them. And I think we've made a lot of good decisions for our community here in the town. So I consider myself just as fortunate.
You know, it's cameras everywhere. You got one in my pocket. Walmart. I guess they can share, especially if you steal something from them. But you know, it is just a piece of purpose of having cameras all together. When you got one left to fill up there right in another Virginia, it wants to be a bad place.
I think that Chief has to do what's best for him and his, his police department, his community. I'm not in his eyes.
No, no, no. It's just. It's just.
Every community's different. Uh, the community's expectation for them. Fortunately, ours is very supportive of that idea. And it's been a positive for all of us.
But our cameras have been beneficial to you.
Oh, our cameras have been very beneficial to us. Uh, that's how we track these juveniles, not only the flock, you know, but the other cameras that we have around the police department as well as the businesses in the town that now have gotten cameras. It just helps us solve crime.
I would want more to be there. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you so much. Again, thank you for all you did on Fourth of July and all that you can continue to do to keep our town safe and your crew. Beth is here. Would you like to give us a report on SCAN activities?
No, thank you. Our new town administrator, Beth, our, one of the board residents this year of SCAN, which is Scottsville Center for Arts and Nature, a five oh one C three nonprofit. We have three arms. One is a thirteen acre tract of land just past the bank lead. Next to the bank lead, that was donated to us and we're making that into paths and parks and the placescape, keeping it as natural as possible. And then we leased the theater from the town. We put on plays and concerts and we have classes. And then we recently were, uh, donated a building across the street for an art gallery. Angel Donner in the community. So get a little history of this. The report for this evening is, uh, for the SCAN land. Okay, I can broadcast this to that. See you in there. Thank you. Uh, on SCAN land, we received a green grant through P, Virginia Beautiful, a thousand dollars. And that's to, uh, put a one big tragic piano there, uh, maybe a poohs stationed back with a bag and getting some ratters and gloves and vests so that we can do cleanup on the SCAN land, but also just assist with when we do the cleanups. Uh, right with the period. We'll have some pop here. So forth. We're excited about that. Uh, also the, I wanted to mention there is summer camp that we just held the last weekend again. The first year went very well. It was first, second, and third graders and ten of them. The board member was a retired elementary school teacher, just took it on. Um, they started out on the SCAN land. It's really different. You started out on the SCAN land. Or it gets too hot. And then come to theater here and have lunch. And then working on a play that the former they had written. And then they go to the gallery, they make some art pieces for the play, each for an animal. So they made like a mask that fit their animal. And then at the end of the week, they put on the production in the theater. Uh, it's all about collaboration, not games, work together. It was very, very, uh, meaningful and successful. And the kids had a good time too. So we're hoping to do more of that. It just sort of gets the kids uh, involved in all these areas that are certainly turned like playing in the theater. That is very cool. Um, second for the gallery, um, we also received a mammal works grant, mammal works on with Dave Matthews fan. They, we've gotten them for several years. The theater, one year was the curtains and then the lighting. Uh, get very sport. But this year we worked, rode to the gallery, uh, for some of the repairs that are needed over there. All the chin weeks need to, um, water around them. The heat pump was thirty-two years old. So we went for that, although we didn't get what we wrote for, so they're going to have to figure that out. That happens. Wow. Also, we just finished the Freedom exhibit in one of the rooms. It was from Juneteenth through July fourth. And had a nice mixture of art around both of those, uh, themes with both being about, uh, freedom. That comes down this week and then it goes up. And lastly, uh, the theater, we have, uh, we're starting next week, charity open for nine weeks, but it's at noon. People that are, can't get down the floor, but still want to be here. Like, I'm excited about that one. And, um, oh, and the summer shorts, which is the, uh, favorite playwriting festival. The posters will be read next week. That's playwriting. It's like seven short plays. It's going to be the weekend in August twenty-first, twenty-fourth in the theater. It's a, uh, combination with the cemetery players, which is the theater group of Van and County. The production series as well with SCAN. Uh, SCAN's getting all the proceeds, just five donations. So if you will, I'll, and spread it as usual. I have a copy of the flyer, it's been a little, we might be down, but I'm ready.
Beth, I'm sorry. Can you send me what dates for the play?
August twenty-first that we can, those through there. Um, then also want to mention, um, on September twentieth, we have two events. The nurture of nature, which was started last year, the pilot by a woman who came, they came under the boards. The SCAN is going to continue that. Down with the river, we partner with, uh, Reunion Rafting, Rock Rock, Bell Hill, Love Not Ego, um, camping demonstrations, guided walks, water activities. It's all about the board members who were brought to land and getting out in the nature and then we have the artists. Uh, so this is a, uh, wellness event. Officer by SCAN. Experiencing physical and mental health benefits of connecting with nature. Also on that day, we have, we will be, and we're not hosting it, there's going to be a James River Redoubt, which is a canoe race and kayaks. Two races, one is power to Scottsville and the other is they aren't very to Scottsville. It's a score race. Didn't really have those. They're like a five K. Um, but they also want novices or newbies that don't be afraid to come out and participate, the same as in a five K adventure. People just getting started on these kinds of things. SCAN will be a beneficiary of the proceeds as well as uphill, um, that's in Bootshoe. Um, so look forward to that. It's going to be a nice busy day on the river. Very nice. And they're here, I'll put them on the table if anybody can take one of them to post it.
No question. The River Logada, has, uh, have y'all reached out to your local water rescue and local, uh, police service to be on standby?
I believe they have. The, um, staff that works at Bell Hill is doing the major putting together of it. All, and I think it, it said they did, but I will certainly follow up on that. It makes sense. We registered through the American Canoe Association, so I think they're providing all of those things for handling all of those details.
I, I, I was just wondering because I've been on the river many times myself and between Howard's Valley and that though, there's only like three major three major points on this, on the Alamo County side for emergency services to get to the river. Same thing for Buckingham also. So it, it just, it sounds like a great idea, just that if there was an incident, sometimes there are places that are going to be very hard to get to. And stuff like that. I just wanted to make sure that they've been notified way in advance.
I appreciate that. I do remember them talking about that, that there's been a didn't make it out, but both, well, it's not one of the races, but that it's can be a difficult area, but I'll follow up on that. Also, after the, um, they're going to be, there's more, they're still getting it all together. As you know, it keeps expanding. So I'll put these over there. Any other questions? And for that to, uh, be doing that, it's, it's past, I thought I worked full-time with the SCAN because you, that's all the, the thing.
Okay, right. Uh, James?
Evening everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, we actually had our meeting for, uh, this meeting, so the last Tuesday. Works out well at much smaller counties. Uh, uh, there's a bit of pain to the knee, so we'll say thank you for that showing up. Uh, so definitely starting off on the way for foot and getting everybody up and running with it. Um, we had an after hours at the end of last month at Harvard Delve, um, over here in Savannah. I'm not sure if they've all been there since they, uh, had their reading brand open. They clearly added on a huge space since it used to be this big. Uh, that seemed very, you can check it out. It's a uh, they did it right. It's, uh, opening us. Um, but that was good. We had, uh, one business from Savannah, Scottsville Chamber, and, uh, maybe if you'd like to do this, uh, I would be able to make that a lot of change. Um, uh, Highway Market on Fourth of July from all accounts, but a huge success. Uh, I had finally, uh, I was sat down and it was, uh, cleaned up in time for the very farmer's market the next day. And she said, seemed like all was in order. So I know that wasn't done by, or carried. I don't know who did, but I would say thank you to Jim and you have put the effort forward to make sure town's coming for the next day. Um, Matt, the voice from Lake Paul Vonry, she took that one this year. That was her first go-in. Debbie Smith, who was one of the fire, uh, farm market coordinators. I've done it for a chamber in the past. You can do it this year. Unfortunately, I had, um, prior experience. Kathy had no prior experience other than being at the farms market. So you can see her. I'm sure she would appreciate a, a good job or thanks for taking that extra work on for this. She was working and working in, if you know what I mean. Um, second Friday on the canal, uh, or Friday evening now, that was a festival, bit of rain delay, but still had a nice crowd out there. So, um, we were out there selling the oldery such, um, and it seemed like everything was having a good time. Um, again, Scottsville, uh, and those events continue to impress us that it seems like cleanup efforts are too much needed. People didn't clean up after themselves. So far, so good. Um, working with, uh, Ron and Danny Byrne on the directory. Uh, had a couple of comments come to us about, uh, some inconsistencies in the, uh, Scottsville directory. And, um, so I want to get those recorded and the more we find them about them, I'm sure we'll get, we'll be able to get those corrections to them for next year. So if you, um, just want to forward them to me and I can compile this and I'll, if that was a dance that he's not feeling much differently. Um, so if somebody mentioned it to you, please just give what they're talking about and we'll go from there. Um, next meeting's August twelfth and, um, we're continuing to work gathering a meeting tomorrow afternoon. Uh, for the next Friday on the, uh, canal and a, um, we're thinking very, for, we're going to do a, uh, line festival meeting for the fall and that's starting to be coming together and, um, yeah, so thanks for coming together. The, that's and, uh, our, we're also planning our, our pair for annual day. Um, and so we'll be doing the assets in the year and, um, uh, we're going to have a little bit, I gotta go say to the town, uh, address and um, so that'll be where it comes as such a new world working. Any question?
Thank you.
Uh, one, one other thing, one before, um, you know, I do a lot and, and put myself into a lot of the town, but I did not on the fourth. I was here at Scottsville enjoying, now they go to come on the fourth in the morning to the parade. Great children in the middle of the day and come back and enjoy the fireworks. Everybody got them stayed. It was just very. It was just very all American day, and I know that doesn't happen magically, so I want to say thank you, that's been great keeping safe. And all your um uh uh part of game there. I know a lot of folks in here had all and we really appreciate that. Up to the dragon.
Thank you. Farmers market manager, Amelie.
Here. Thank you. Hey, everyone. Uh so today I want to give out my six month report and. Update you all on the many work problems that have been. Uh either completed or ongoing, you all have the reports in front of you. Um or hopefully good. Um let's go with everything specifically and I'll go through that, but before I do. Uh I wanted to thank Mr. Tyson personally for getting the um. Getting that great water for the pockets, filling the pockets and then the uh. Because of that, one of my vendors has been able to move forward and sell her products that and she is very satisfied. Okay, so first I'm gonna go through uh the completed items that I have from the six months that. Uh have been here. First one that I have completed is increasing vendor communication, which was a. Uh because sort of have been discussed by vendors specifically in the past. And so I wanted to, when I came in, to communicate with them and I do that via a G P newsletter. Then I send out and I update them and very transparent them what's going on this month. Uh we've also a free social media presence um through Instagram and Facebook. And uh do that, we've been able to um. Send out some really exciting um information about events that we've had going on, for example, this Saturday. We have the first Lego villagers competition for young, for the young ones in the town and we have about. By signups so far. So we're very excited about that and they'll be, they will be giving them finals and markets and even judge and they'll. Have prizes, so very excited stuff. Next, um we have implemented a no dog policy in accordance with Virginia State law. Uh I'll go into this a little bit later, though unfortunately that has been met with some uh. Some difficulty that are from the community that um that. Uh I've also signed up vendors for the market season. And um all of my centers have been very great and. We've been continuing almost every week to get people who are interested in signing up, which is very exciting. We have about. I've in general, I've created approximately thirty new vendors to catch them. Um I've also implemented mar- market metrics, we're gonna make a counter that I have every week. On average, we have about two hundred fifty to three hundred people who come to the market. Um and so that is great. And I've heard, I've heard positive feedback from the community in general as well about that, saying that the market has been not full and that they're happy. So I'm very happy as well. Um I've also implemented a new space plan to increase um vendor capacity, which is also something that vendors. Have uh expressed that they wanted with the market this la- last year. And so now we have more people within inside of the deal. Um. And next, so those are the short term action goals that I have implemented. On long term action goals, there's far. To move the cross center, the books are new from a revenue centered. We don't cause any two revenues, which has been horrible from the beginning. And um so far this year, I'm very happy to report, if you look on page. Um three of your little packet, you'll see a very close approximation of what we're bringing in. This new around sixty-five thousand dollars, which is um, which is completing our goal of moving from a. Um. Top center to revenue center, because last year our country was going on. Um. I don't have the exact numbers for that yet, and I will be interviewing you're working on that, I'm gonna appreciate that. But that I from based on the calculations that you can see there is a very close box. Uh next, I have worked and unfortunately. This is um one more negative side of this. I worked trying to start a junior farmers market. As part of attitude and also encouraging budget for membership and creativity with uh children in town. Unfortunately, I will have to make the announcement that that would be canceled, just to the general that it's signed up. And um but uh you never know in the future, we could bring that up again, but as of right now. That's something that uh it's. Um and other great news, we submitted a grant for market revitalization for maintenance of the vacation. From Bama Works as um Beth talked about earlier, the if you have a piece and Andy got worth that. For six thousand dollars, so very, very proud of that. And um I'll count them and shoot that book um whether it could use that plan. Um we very, we very much need new lights in the farmers market. Um for both safety and aesthetic reason, aesthetic reasons, they're not very properly situated, they're rusting. And for safety reasons, I don't want anything, I don't want the town to potentially rely on for any. Any issues that that could potentially cause. So I will pass it out and I'll leave this back. Uh the sheet of new light fixtures from um for our beautiful satellites. Um with potential, you know. Um. You could they break what the download and these I find are very pretty, by far statistically significant, and I believe that they share us.
Great.
Um. We're also working to in general with some potentially some of the leftover money from the grant, um they. If they hopefully have some. Uh to use that for um ongoing uh. Improvement for beautification of the market, so I would definitely like to give a banner that says market this way and alert people. Coming um in uh many directions, that there is a market in the pavilion area. And uh it will be there on Saturday and also new trash cans, because the ones that we have are. Um a little bit older and they think having this right now in the area, I've just been getting more goodness that.
I'm like, we should have said this earlier, but it's wonderful, it's not a grant, besides the overall report, but that's really, really. Wonderful to hear that you did that.
So see, my brother and I, we worked on that together and I have to give her so much credit, she was. Amazing for that, for getting that and I'm really happy that we were able to get that. Um. Next, we're talking to you on increased vendors capacity. We've been having a situation with vendors um. Coming here, we'd we'd love to have a nice full market area, we'd like to have people. Come and see that the vendors that they love, that are there, the regulars are there. And the vendors that are newer and for those who might be in the merchandising area, they can see. And have very diverse diverse mix of events. When they come in there, but we've had a little bit of issues. We do have some vendors who. Um don't show up from week to week and. Unfortunately, because our vending is a little bit smaller, it's unfortunately there is. Uh our next project is to diversify vendors and vendor types. And I think this is definitely an ongoing part, but I have, I feel like right now the vendors that we have. We have a very diverse mix. You can get your produce from one side, you can get baked goods, you can get um. Artisans and stuff and you can also get lunch of different types vegetarian and meat. Uh and meat box, so I think it's still an ongoing process, but I think so far. Our vendors are also very person, are very happy to give them. What? Um. Another long term goal is that we want to increase the customer. On average, we have about two hundred fifty to three hundred customers, which is very great. I think that's a great number, especially for. A town of around five hundred people, but also um. We have community members to come and just look around and you know. Buy something, you know, we have more, we will come in and uh buy from our vendors and support their community and. I think that is some an issue that needs to be addressed and um. We're spreading in more people. Um but overall, around three hundred acres, this was pretty bad, but. We have vendors who sell all so. Um. So that handles um. That is a few things that are our long term symbols. However, I did want to keep things to, uh I did want to address a few things of. The first, I mean, I want to agree, I have my. For the light that says you all just saw, based on the rate that we were raised, we only have another month to. Um. Get lights replaced for the fourteen side ways that we have. Um I would be really interested in that for the town and for the market to um. Do the whole pavil. So there's the middle section, what we call the center aisle, they have, there's approximately eight lights stairs as well. And I want to ask you all, just going here, I know if we could maybe use some of the um. You could go into the regular budget a little bit to replace those lights and match. The other ones that have been that we are working to get for the for the.
Running a pretty tight ship this year.
Yeah.
You're talking about next year?
Yeah, but had the fence built a place yet?
Yes, they have been.
Okay, so do the fans come with or without light?
They did.
Okay.
So their lights are separate, they're right next to the fans and um. The we had to dip into the uh farmers market budget to spring for the fans here, but. Um except for one fan, all of them have been working great and um I feel so glad that they would need to be more get more.
Can we do this? Can we take the request of its eight lights?
Yes.
And put it in for our town administrator to put on on a wish list of for what we'd like to and price out. The amount from what you've put there and we can take a look at it.
Yeah, but it's the internal, we can do something like that, but I don't know. You know, I could always um. Um I can always try to get in and see if we can be some. I think it's true about your.
Sure, sure, well, I mean, we can take a look at the numbers and. See, as they said, we're running a tight ship, but at the same time, it's 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 an important thing to look at.
Thanks. Another. Uh concern that we have is enforcement of the dog policy. So I'm not sure how many of you have seen or know about. Uh on page two of your packet, you will see the Virginia law. That discusses food animals at home traffic and it's really any places where food is more secure. It is definitely a market. I put this year of our own um by the baby or by the. Uh put up the signs that say, and dogs allowed, except for service animals in accordance with federal law. And um unfortunately, that has been met with some. I can't say any other nicer word, but some hostility to the community and.
People love their dogs.
And I. Um and I'm not sure, I just wanted to let you all know that this has been an issue. And unfortunately, I have been met with some pretty rude and nasty personal comments.
Have you put up the ordinance itself in some visible place there? So you can point to it.
I've had, um I've told the community about it in general.
Yeah.
But I wasn't sure, you know, maybe I'll try to look and see in the budget if I can find this time to.
Well, you don't need a fancy sign, just a poster.
Okay.
Just pull up the, pull up a copy of the code and stick it up, so it's probably displaying, but. Your job description does not involve people having been rude to you.
Well, there is a leash law that, so if you see a dog down there, not on a leash. And reach out to, you can go to whoever else is on duty, we'll forget that situation right quickly. You know, I I I know it's difficult dealing with people with dogs and stuff, I've had. Some issues myself, but um a lot, a lot of people look at the dogs as young children, people who don't have kids. They're pet to their kid, they're, you know, that's why he's active everywhere, but yeah. Seeing this right here, now. Like mention it, with the animal, is this gonna also be the same thing for the Canal Basin?
Uh.
The reason I ask is because I got food truck vendors out there and everybody's watching music over here, so. That would be.
Same one.
Yeah.
So probably would be a bad idea to put someone on a on on line or. Somewhere just to, hey, you know, just to remind them, no dogs at the farmers market, no dogs at Canal Basin Square. Uh dog, dog welcome, it's got to go, while you're walking on sidewalk, follow the leaf law. That might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, originally the sign did read that dogs are allowed only on leash, but um I've heard. Uh that has seen there and also we have vendor concerns about that as well, and that's why I want to argue. Uh I've had, I've heard of dogs who have uh unfortunately, you know, uh vendors products, we've learned. Any of our communication or to hold you for that, which in my, in my eyes, my vendors are very important. And uh I want to, you know, I want them to know that um I support them with that and um. That's why I did it. All right, and.
And I'm uh judging by the date in twenty twenty, probably hasn't been enforced that for a while, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
But at the original sign, we see to indicate that as the community indicates that as well. Um so.
That's just part of the tier to reinforce.
Yeah, and I did like to inform you because if community members come up to you and complain, or they say, I'm reading this to counsel. I'm not doing this to be the dragon lady. I'm doing this because it is state law. And it is met because of vendor concerns, so. Um another issue that unfortunately is the more negative side of the market. It's concerned over political merchandise. Means a few events um now, there's a particular customer who's trying to complain that. One of my vendors sells uh political merchandise, particularly um MAGA cups. And um. Those cups in general, I haven't found close looking at them because their trucks are only a small portion, they sell that. They sell all kinds of things that are not political and I. I wanted to come to you and unfortunately, this customer has been harassing me about this. I wanted to come to you all firstly to um. Let you know that it's my, it's my understanding that I don't. Dictate what my vendors sell, particularly when it comes to political. Merchandise, I find that can be murky legal waters. And I don't want the town to be liable for anything, and we accept vendors of all types, we have a nonpartisan. Uh voter voting registration at the market, we have nonprofits, we have religious groups. Um I don't necessarily, I don't turn anyone down, but I know you guys, unless it was something. Particularly hangous and religious, um such as for hangouts. And another reason is um to deal with this customer, she or they uh. Have said that um this person's gonna go to the press. And and bring up their concern because they feel that having political um. Merchandise is wrong and should not be at the farmer's market. And um. So if you hear anything about that, I wanted to let you all know first from me that uh. I feel that it's not my job to dictate. What they sell, particularly if it's something that. You know, this is just the name vendor is now voters registrations in general um and. And uh she also said that which is why I found to uh counsel with the public there.
Can you please, can you please tell them to do that? If it was like, it's only one person?
Yeah, um yes.
And did they talk to the vendor?
No, they don't.
Yeah. And then they don't buy them, right? I mean.
My mother, which I don't appreciate.
Yeah, yeah.
And um unfortunately, I do consider it harassment. And um I wanted you all to hear from me first if this person does come to counsel to. That too.
They follow.
Can we post a sign that says, you know, it's not our political affiliation or?
I don't need feeding to us.
Yeah.
Ignore that. That person continues to harass you, please, I think I speak for the whole council.
Yeah.
Talk to any of us and we will do our best to deal with that. You do not need to be burying the bra. I don't, I'm the most. And I got personal here.
I think it's all.
But I cut this man, they, they are.
You can sell whatever you want.
Because it's not like.
They talk decency laws.
Videos.
Yeah.
But I can't, that is, that is another thing that I wanted to address and I did want this person to know. It is absolutely their right as a citizen in America and as a citizen of Scottsdale, they can come here, they can go to the press. And they will, it won't be like a serious, but um.
What did they say to that?
Um to say this person was sopra these years, but I I.
What? Maybe that's the answer. So what?
But I I I do want, you know, whoever comes and has a complaint, they're absolutely welcome to. Having a council to talk about it, but I want you all to know that. That is my reasoning for it and um I kind of wanted to know what you all thought about that as well and I think.
If that continues, please, please inform us. We will not stand for having a town employee harassed.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Well, I have two questions for this. First of all, before I start question, thank you for what you do down at Farmer's Market. It does sound like your job is not as easy as people probably think it is, but you know, uh. In town council, we hear a lot of complaints all the time from everybody, so um. Back to what you were talking about, implement new space to increase vendor capacity. Do you or do the farmer's market control how the vendors set up this stuff? Or do you just allow people come in and set it up big and wide as they want? I mean, do you have? Control of space? And my second question would be for you. Have you considered uh? Having a second farmer uh market day like for the people, a lot of people. But this is Tommy, we have people go out of town Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so they can't make it. Maybe something on Wednesday or Thursday evening. Apparently it works pretty well on Charlotteville, but then again, this is Godville, not Charlotteville, but.
Yeah.
I wonder if you thought about possibly a second day, might bring in more people, more revenue.
Um well, thank you for the problem. Yeah, definitely was proud when you did. Uh I did recently complete any certification for this that officially certifies any guys manager. But um to pre your first question, um so we have a pay schedule based off of either a ten by five space. Where vendors can set up or a ten by ten space, which is um if you look at our schedules, there are. Space around these squares, those concrete squares. Is basically the one square or two squares depending on what they pay for and available stuff. Um so they can set up however they want in that space. They just have to be in that space. And they also have to keep the um the end of the walkways clear to um. In in uh where it's with fire and ADA. But yeah, they can set it up however they want in their alive space. Um as to your second question, I have talked to vendors about this as a sort of general and brought that up to them. But a lot of my vendors, they work directly, so um I have a feeling there'd be even less vendors than we have. On Saturdays, which I'm not sure if. If we have noticed both in the community to have them to have it during the weekday or not. Um so in general, I think it's just not quite as feasible to have it there, to have it during the weekday. But I do understand what you say because um we have customers who are on vacation during the weekend, we have vendors who are on vacation. So yeah, I.
I just want, we get close to harvesting time, people, you know, it's gonna be within the next month and a half, people tomatoes will start coming up and they're. Corn.
Yeah, we used to have a Thursday afternoon market and Saturday, I don't know why the Thursday afternoon market stopped.
Why not try to time it with the Fridays on the canal? So once a month? I don't, I don't know if that, but there's a lot of foot traffic during those times. It might end up being successful. Branch day, it'd only be once a month, so.
Um I've been meaning to speak for um the Republican Jeff going through ones, so basically, you know, if they maybe can. Come to a.
Just to find you, it sounds like you have a good grip on what you do.
Yeah.
What is the season end for the farm market?
Never. The dairy farm market's.
And then the business market? Is that separate?
That's the stream.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Very thorough.
I appreciate it. Mr. Basset, anything on ARV?
We did not meet this month um before he's gonna start here. I'll update for you then. Not been very excited with ARV for a while. It's a good thing.
Mr. uh, let's go.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of updates for you. We met last week and. We have a new chair, that would be counselor, uh Planning Commissioner Angevin is our new chair. Uh our new vice chair was Mr. Kerrigan. And the planning commission. Discussed a couple interested people in the community and recommended Nancy Pio for the new, I think, commissioner position. We reviewed the comprehensive plan and had some, made some progress on that and we also. Had a horrible hack into the planning commission and that was. Very regrettable that I've never seen anything like that happen before, you know? Or regret that that happened.
But we did figure it out and we know what happened. Um unfortunately, we were talking to um.
Lincoln.
Lincoln and Lincoln was in Singapore, right? So he was using an international VPN to dial in to the phone number. And what they were doing is they were attaching to him. They weren't coming into the room, so we didn't know they were there. So every time he would come up on the screen or he would talk, they would. Put their stuff up on the screen. Um and then figured it out what they were doing and then we had him going to his UVA. Um VPN and as soon as he switched over to UVA VPN, it all stopped. So they couldn't get through the firewall and here I guess the the international VPNs were not secure. It's kind of like an open. Invitation for people to have, so.
It was a unfortunate situation, but thank you for taking care of it. It was a reminder of unfortunate things out there. Mr. Mayor, that's my opinion.
All right, um any thoughts on when we were going to get the vote on the comp plan?
We did not have. Uh I don't think we, the the next phase is a review of. The section that we are working on. I I will say with Javier having left, I did. Slow the process down a little bit and that it's working with Lincoln, but I I think we're close to it.
Hey, well, you let the new chairman of the planning commission know that we're anxious to get this thing finished.
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Heisen, the floor is yours.
Um in the government service, we. Talked about the the budget and the process and we'd like to invite you, Elizabeth, to one of our meetings next. If we could talk about that and help with the get that the budget policy and procedure and schedule uh and. Better for next year, so that we're not waiting for the last minute. Um. The uh we talked a lot about parking and that that. I don't know if you want to talk about that now, but that that should be a carryover topic because we never really completed that, so. I don't know if you want to talk about that now or is a new is a carryover topic.
Uh well, put it in carryover topics, but we talked about it twice last month and I think we've talked it out. But you can bring it, bring it up over.
Okay.
Carryover.
Okay, right after uh the ground speaking. Yeah, well, we never, it was uh the going back, it was suggested that we look at a policy procedure. Uh or a recommendation. Uh since we we already have a uh. We had a public hearing, not a public, we had some people comment and the chamber of commerce weighed in on it. And so there there was interest in coming up with some some guidelines. And if we don't want to do that, we ought to at least say, okay, we're we're gonna leave it as it is. But anyway, well, okay, we'll go over that one. I could go over that a little bit uh when we do the carryover topic. Uh um. And uh yeah, I could do that later.
All right, got anything else?
Uh for government service? Uh the parks and rec, uh the main uh issue with the parks and rec is, well, I sent the minutes, the bulk of these, so you'll know, but the the main. Uh issue that's gonna be ongoing is trying to um get Canal Basin Square upgraded and maintained, ma- maintain. Uh and that's gonna be a challenge of of. Because since we're using it so much more now, it's it'd be good to uh really. Take a look at that in the future or even this next year to try to get it back in back in order. Um. Anyway, George Goodwin's been, we've met and come up some ideas and suggestions, but there's a lot of little little things that need to be taken care of. So uh anyway, that's uh the the park itself, Van Cleef is in pretty good shape, but um there's some issues there, but. Not as important as Canal Basin Square.
Any questions for Mr. Heisen? Urgency preparedness. Yeah, as I wrote now, we haven't had, have not had a meeting, uh I did speak with Jack and. Jack told me he had reached out to uh Alamo County and some surrounding counties, working on some uh. Certain certifications and some other related items. Um. Yeah, that's about all I have for right now and I have reached out to the uh. I've reached out to all the members of the uh EPC, as soon as get back in touch with me, I send out a. Question, little question there and uh. I will report their findings and any issues. Yeah, appreciated. Any questions for urgency preparedness? Vince seems to be hopping.
Well, thanks again in the chamber, touched upon all the upcoming events. We've had great weather, so we need hoping for that. Um only I would ask would be back to the town staff and I know with the turnover with check writing and things like that. Um some of the folks like um uh that have been doing the organizing for the uh. Fridays one, have they been able to work out the checks and everything with the? The town, so they're they're able to use the sponsorship money as a town sum, so that's, everything seems to be going great, I hope.
It was, whether or not perfect last time, it was pretty, pretty good crowd there.
Oh yeah, that Fourth of July was great weather in the morning. That was top month, so.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Any questions for you, Vince? Going to even though the town administrator also holds a position of town treasurer. I'm gonna ask the assistant, so which way to get the report?
Um we have been, I've been working on getting all of our. Meals tax collectives were pretty much up to date on everybody. Um I've had some new businesses coming in. Uh that have been um applying for new business licenses. One, I didn't realize that Tavern on James sold. And they have a new gentleman coming in, um he takes over the fifteen and we've got his business license sorted out. There's a gentleman that is putting in a.
Aquatics.
Aquatics, aquatics and exotics. Yes.
Right behind there.
Somewhere behind the tavern.
A little building where Kathy Morris started. Uh that's gonna be an aquarium shop.
So he's got his business license in and I've had a couple of other people come in asking, you know. Do we have anything open? You know, where can we rent? Is there anything for rent? I mean, people want to come here. To put businesses in. So I mean, it's it's picking up and I, you know, we're we're a small town and. I think it's it's in the next couple of years, we're really gonna have a good downtown section, if not up at the top.
Also a local gentleman and interested in buying a building next next door, so.
And traveling barber, there's a gentleman that comes in, he has a barber shop on wheels, I guess you would say. And he is looking for a permanent spot. So if you guys hear of anything, he is actually looking to settle down here in town also.
Do you have a list of vacant Russian spots?
Um I think right now we only have what a couple down here, one across the street.
Um we need to update it.
Yeah, I think we need to update it, but I think the problem I'm hearing. From everybody trying to find a space is they're, they've been staying out of. Up where Food Line is at, I guess the guy is just raising the rents to the point of they can't afford. And you know, they wanted to know if there was anything that we could do about that and I'm like, I don't think there is. I mean, it's. Definitely up to.
Cameron Krautstetter and all that.
I don't.
I believe he used to have it.
There's no doubt.
I tell you.
There's a new one.
Yeah, because he has the Tiger.
Tiger. He he has, he has old IGA and everything all the way down, but I thought he used to have on earth.
But that sold to the gentleman that owns.
Yeah, the group from Tiger Fuel, it wasn't Tiger Fuel that bought it, but it was some of the principal people in Tiger Fuel.
By the back of the. I got you.
Group that fought the shop, so.
So that's that's and plus downtown here, I know Larry, I know he was pretty extreme on his rents too. So. I don't know, you know, I don't know what the answer is. I don't, I just know that we have a lot of people that are interested. In coming down here and and putting down roots. Um.
We also, Melvin and I met with a couple the other day that are interested in buying Mr. Toshi's piece of property where the house burned up there. And building a new home there, so.
As a matter of fact, Mr. Toshi's son was in today, today or guess.
I had a list.
Today, this morning, but he wanted to know. You know, that's only an acre lot and I guess up on the top, there's a flat spot or something. And he was like, well, can they build up there and not down at the bottom? Like, well, you know, it's gonna depend on the setbacks on the. If you can get water up there, if they can get sewer, if they can get many, so what about if we subdivide it and cut it down to two lots? Like, well, then you're getting into the same thing with the setbacks and, you know, that would all have to go to the A R B. Because that's in a historical dis.
That that piece of property is in Van Can, correct?
It's in Van Can.
Therefore, they would have to go by, but Van Can requires.
Therefore, they would have to, uh, go by, but with Van Canning requires, if, if some places you cannot, you have to have so many acres. When can you put a house to one?
I know there's subdivision right behind there, or what is a plotted one anyways, it's not, there's no houses, but
Right.
There's a bunch of small lots divided up there. So I don't know if that'll step through.
Obviously, what'd they work out with Mr. Toshi?
Question a little business wise. I discussed this with Javier, but I don't, I don't think we ever pretty got the answer, although I think knows. If you're a contractor, putting it like an instructional contractor out here, say it's a new development that's going in.
Right.
Do your business's license need to be current in Scottville or is the county going to cover you? So people who are coming in, they'll do a workout here, plowing, whatever. They can come to town to get a business license from Scottville.
Just like I have, right now I have the cell tower up there.
Yeah.
I have there's five different contractors that's going to be working on that cell tower here in the next year. And they will apply for business license.
Okay.
So what will happen is next year, the first year is fifty dollars because they don't have, you know, a- anything better what they're going to do or how much it's going to cost. So next year, when I send them their business license, they'll have to pay for the sales that they do, the construction sales that they do this year, it would be paid next year.
What, what are they doing with the cell?
I have no idea.
You can ask.
Yeah, I have five different people, so I don't know if it's, if they're upgrading the tower, if they're putting new people on.
Yeah. Please ask.
Okay. I can find that out. I have to email the one girl back, so.
Yeah. And then tell Elizabeth. Yes. So I understand it. Now, if you're, say, Dancy, when you're doing work out there, obviously they've got a business license. But if you're a subcontractor, subcontractor coming in, the sudden development might use their own folks or subcontracted out, they have to have a business license. So some places counties cover the, you know, I didn't know about.
I've been trying to get a hold of Martin Bourne. Because they're the one who put Tiger Fuel in.
Mm-hmm.
And he never gave me business license. They built Tiger Fuel, but we don't have a business license. I have, I've called them, I've sent letters.
Send them a reading letter.
If you figure Tiger Fuel, that's probably.
So, any questions for Melody? Appreciate it, thank you. Yeah, I'll just keep my report short, uh. Seems like everybody's having air conditioner problems. The, uh, we had, uh, what's the name of the company that came out here? Melody, Melody, what's the name of the company that, uh, came out to check our air conditioning out?
Beth Cohen.
Yeah, they were out here getting ours straight, the museum air condition's down. We've found out at a special meeting that it's going to be about eighteen thousand to fix that one. Back, uh, last month, one afternoon, I got a call saying that the Boys and Girls Club Air Conditioning had gone out. And so I went down there and, uh, we were offered them space up here, the rest of the afternoon until the kids can be picked up in the library, went over to the library, they offered the, uh, same thing over there. Uh, they got it halfway working, so they didn't have to need kids around. Uh, Scan had, had a summer camp down, downstairs for, uh, the youngsters and they put on a play, which was really good. They wrote it, directed it, made the costumes and everything. It was really good for the play they put on, went to that, um. Still been coming in regularly to help Melody with, uh, office work and, uh, or I think I've thanked the chief for Fourth of July, but the same goes for our staff here in the, in the, uh, uh, office and for fire, fire department for putting the whole day on for us. So that's June's. Any questions? We're asked Mr. Bowling if he has anything for us?
I could have something for Beth Cohen, by the way, um, next Monday. There, it's not Beth Cohen, but Beth Cohen did fix the drain in the bath to keep everything from draining into the basement and into scan. So now that we have that done and dried out, the twenty first, we're going to go with the twenty first. There's going to be a company here that's going to be doing molder mediation. But unfortunately, that is our, the twenty first is our meeting for town council. So you guys will have to decide if you want to have it the twenty eighth, the next Monday or later on in the week. Because once they do the molder mediation, they spray this stuff and it goes through all of the, the, um, duct work. And we can't be in the building, so we have to.
I had that on my list to bring up at the end.
Okay.
So we'll be thinking about it when we get to the end of the meeting, if we want to meet middle of next week instead of Monday or the following week, whatever works out best for everybody. And we'll talk about that, uh, here a little bit. Okay.
Yeah. The, the mold, um, was that because of the most recent installation that Beth Cohen did? I mean, oh, he ran the lines, they came back, they, it was their fault, we have a problem?
That, uh, I don't really know because it was the. Well, yeah, they charged us, but the, the molder meeting estimate I had was from two years ago. So I guess Javier's been working on this for two years.
Well, this, they put the unit in, what, three years ago?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, was there a leak somewhere?
Yeah, well, one problem was, there's a, there's a condenser line that goes out the back of the building. And it was missing. There's just a hole there and it was running down there and it was going underneath the, the tin roof. And it was collecting in the back room back here on, on first floor. And it had a place there, it was all black and moldy, the water just collecting under it.
I've been saying, it's two units up there, one is old, one is new. And if, or the new one, and what they saw probably, would they be allowed? Well, that's my question. Yes, they probably would, or they?
You would think that they're allowed, but we didn't have to pay that amount to get whatever remediation done to it.
Just want to say.
And a year ago, it was supposed to be severed the wall, but there was a crack in the drain pan and that was leaking out. And that's where the wall started. There may have been two.
That's right.
But we just started it scanning a year ago, dude, that I inherited it, so. May have been there longer, but that's to be discovered.
I checked for the mold. They were the cause of it, unit A or unit B, I'm sure.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, be thinking about what we want to do about next Monday's meeting, where, since we can't, uh, can't have it up here. Mr. Bow.
I've been helping Elizabeth, I know that they've helped so far. I did, uh, give her the, the history of, um, the current cell phone tower negotiations from the starting with around the first of the year, then, then I hope that's a help.
Yes.
And also some tips about how she can approach negotiating those people. And analyzing the, what's a good deal for the town and what isn't. So we'll proceed. And at some point, she's going to have to come back to you and get some input from you because she can't really negotiate on her own and then, uh, be effective unless she has some idea about what you want. But at this point in time, um, she don't, I don't think she know, you know, nothing about how you're going to go.
I, I, yeah, I want to present to you all your A, B, C, or D. What, you know, give me your thoughts on it and then we'll convince it from there and then I can, um, figure out what you all want and what we're going to um, talk with the cell tower folks about.
And then also give her a, a strategy for, uh, a platform to analyze the things, so something called capitalization, right? You, you, you're making money right now and you've got a rate of return, uh, all the cap rate instances, uh, how much you're making dollars a month. And, and you can get real big dollars, you do it, bankers do it. And so you have a competitive value that leases work as far as the cap rate. You can, I don't know what, six percent, seven percent, eight percent, whatever it is that the rate of return is. But then you can compare that rate of return to the rate of return of what they're proposing for, uh, X dollars plus Y rent or Y knowledge plus X rent, that sort of thing. Give you some, to give you all some sort of platform to come to some conclusion as to what's in best interest of the town. That's my, that's what essentially what Barry did, uh, back when, uh, we had, uh, when, when he, he just took the ball in hand and ran it because he's ready with that concept and, and that was structured. He used to determine what they were offering at that time, wasn't as good as what he currently had as far as, um, the rent management. That, that makes sense to me. But we'll see, yes. That's coming in the future.
Any questions for Mr. Bowling? Thanks, sir. Town administrator, you have anything you want to?
No, whatever, it's also. Sorry, I've, I've been having computer difficulties all the days today. Um, but, so I wrote everything out, um, in your package, um, there's, uh, copies of the, um, security policy and public identification procedures. That I've, and, and so we discussed what happened last Monday as the planning commission, um, workshop or the, the planning commission meeting. Um, although as Melody explained that we all figured out that it came through on someone else's, um, VPN or lack thereof, a VPN. Um, I think it was, it's a good, uh, more than, no pun intended, eye opening experience to see this. Um, because I don't want that to happen, like if we were having this meeting or, or something like that, um. So I researched different, um, ideas or suggestions that were, um, that they have been made, um, to prevent that because apparently it has happened in other localities. Um, that, you know, nefarious people have gotten into the Zoom meetings. Um, and I think by the way that it is now that it's publicized, it's on the website, um, what I've read is they, they, um, suggested that not be done like that. But this was just an idea. I just wanted to, uh, let you all see this. And, um, give me your feedback. I also, um, talked to Jim about this to make sure that um, it was meeting the FOIA requirements and the public accessibility, um, requirements as well. But, um, anyway, uh, food for thought. Um, the other thing I've been working on, a, um, town administrator dashboard, um, for me, but I can certainly share that with you all. I'm a visual person and I like to see things where I know where I am. Um, something I've been working on, peace, um, statistics, um, have a priority section, um, a budget section that I can see, um, and overview of spending and tracking. So that's, you know, we're not waiting for that and it's going to be up to date and you all can see it. Um, category wise, you know, show the, the budget breakdown. Um, and a visual progress, you know, like maybe a barcode or something that shows, um, utilization of it. Um, any of the upcoming meetings, um, I've also worked on a tracking spreadsheet, um, because of course with the conversation about the outdoor equipment that we have, I don't know because I'm new, I don't know what we have, other than, you know, various conversations. So I came up with a, um, a tracking, um, document that just shows. And again, I want to make this where everyone can see it online or if you want to, you know, look at a paper copy. But what I was, um, recommending is to have the new name, have a serial number, I'd like to have asset tags put on things. Um, and then with that, it goes into the purchase date, brand and model, the purchase cost. But more importantly, I think the maintenance interval, and I could take the, um, whatever the equipment is and put the maintenance, suggested maintenance in this document and then it reminds us of what it's due or what's, um, you know, what, what's upcoming. There's also a section for office equipment that we could do, computers and things like that, printers. And then there's reports and then everyone loves reports. So then at the end of that, you know, you can pull up a report and visually see where we are. Um, I wouldn't want to print out a whole bunch of these, but if you guys want to just look at this, I'll, I'll share it. And the information that's on here is just placeholders. So don't think that we have a Ford F-150 or anything like that. But if you guys want to look at that, um.
We asked them to.
I mean, it has like a VIN number and everything, but like I said, it's just a placeholder. It's not really, um, what was in there. Uh, let's see, what else? Uh, just uh, trying to get my feet under, under me and I think I'm still sorting there, um. Let's see, I've talked about that, the S O P for the Zoom meetings, um. I, we have continued to research the options for the ground cleaning equipment. I did have a couple of the mowers that were, we talked about and I was running a scenario like if we replaced mowers. If we bought used mowers, um, if the repaired mowers, and I had all that on my computer and I, I can't get it off. Um, again, if you guys want to see what I've done, I will be more than happy to email it to you. Um, let's see, what else? I've continued to look at grants, um, Melody was kind enough to share me, share with me some of the information that she's had with that. Um, I did develop a new document for volunteers, um, Melanie was out, um, sick for a couple of days and um, a concern, I had a concern about, uh, volunteer and what they were heavy, well, not heavy, but the, the what equipment they were going to be using. And so I had, um, I was concerned about that, so I made a document, um, and an application for them to fill out. And, um, I also have that, I can shoot with you, uh, the cell tower, we talked about that. Um, E-cards, it was just brought to my attention here recently and then Melody and I, uh, she gave me the folder today about the Bank of America. So I'm going to be looking into that. Oh, and, um, this is a big one, but. So we have a lot of paper files and folders and sort of running down a room, we're trying to figure out where everything is. Um, so she got to look into that today. And then actually, Jack and I were talking about the research, um, the record retention policy of, uh, Virginia, library in Virginia. Anyway, so some of the things I know that we have to keep forever and then other things we can, um, get rid of. So we're going to, uh, Melody and I are going to start looking at that. Um, and then I attended a meeting with the chief and, um, another, the Alamo County Police Chief, is that right? And we did the recap on July fourth.
Fire chief.
Yeah, okay, fire chief. So, um, yeah, so I attended that, so I'll know what to expect, um, hopefully. Um, for my July fourth, um, meeting and then let's see what else. So Melody and I met with, um, we meet with today, Hurt and Profit, the engineering firm that we use for the dam. And, um, they reviewed the conditional operation and maintenance certificate that we have. And, um, apparently they did an, uh, inspection, a twenty twenty four inspection last year. And, uh, so I believe that they went through and they determined what needed to be vegetation and trees needed to be cleaned up on the embankment up there and then within twenty five feet. And, um, so the thing that jumped out at me on this letter that we got today or that we were reviewing, um, it's to be completed, this part is to be completed by August thirty first, twenty twenty five. So, um, anyway, we'll work, um, to get that done and I talked to, um, to Jim and and I also requested from Hurt and Profit and apparently there's a regional engineering DCR to come and walk the site with me and show me what needs to be done because I want to get Jim on removing that vegetation ASAP so we can try to meet, um, somewhat of the August thirty first deadline. ASAP, so we can try to meet, um, somewhat of the August thirty first deadline. Luckily, the guy that signed this is my old boss at DC parts. You know, I'll be getting there, um, to say, don't be too hard on us, we're, we're trying. But anyway, so there's different, um. Different items that need to be addressed, but that's the one that's, um, the most, um, the soonest. And, um.
Did we know about that before?
Yeah, I've heard about that. And I, I, Javier talked to me about that and also sent me the report, but some of that. Jim won't be able to do this. I mean, some of those trees are going to have to come down. That's a shame, some of the, yeah, some of those.
Javier, that didn't do that.
Oh, did he go with that?
He didn't do that annual walk around, there's been a schedule submitted. Oh, you let me know about always. Not sure if I had it, thanks, and then.
Oh, that'd be great.
Unfortunately, in the budget, there's, there was only five hundred dollars in the budget for, um. For the work to be done. So what I was hoping is. That Jam can remove a lot of the vegetation, um, and then the other, um. Anyway, that he could remove a lot of the vegetation and the, um, Hurt and Profit engineer did indicate. Um, an alteration permit may be needed and he was saying that if it's, um. Larger trees and things like that. I haven't seen that, so I, I can't even answer, you know, speak to that, but. If it's of certain size, as you know, then they're going to have to get heavy equipment in there and then want to put that on the embankments and on the dam. Because it could, um. Um, what is the word I'm looking for? It can damage it, but it's. Not the most competitive of the, um, structure.
And they send their receiptage prior. Yeah, that's what they were worried about, the heavy.
The waters, the water seeps and that we should have an, um, emergency action plan, like what happens if the equipment is up there and the.
Elizabeth, one thing I would say from talking to our. Somebody who's worked with Javier already, I would say talk to James, just to chat with him because that he works. For a tree company and that's, I don't, I don't know the details, but you've already looked at it, is what you're saying?
Yes.
So you've already looked at it, you know, the tree, y'all can talk.
Okay, all right.
Do you have it already addressed?
We're not addressed. There's a proposal too.
I got you.
Yeah, it's my understanding that no physical work has been done at all.
So you would maybe follow up with super.
How, how big are the trees?
So one of, but there's two different areas of concern, one is. What I understand is probably growing because where dam, we, the natural embankment.
Right.
That those trees mostly are, are, are smaller. Uh, the ones that are, uh, in question that are bigger, that we can still work with. Are the, I guess where the creek comes through the dam there to the left, up there's a, uh, aid path.
Huge.
Yeah, there's some big ones in there that, um. Okay, there's that more of a challenge, but we have access to the spillway, so we don't have to be, have equipment on the dam. My, my prior experience with working with trees on dams. I don't know how they were allowed to be retained, building a dam, but, um, the fact that they're. The fact that they're there and that's crazy, the root system is kind of concerning. So I just assumed that since they were below it. The dam was put in after the tree was already there, but. It wasn't a concern, but maybe they're sort of on top or whatever, but I'm not a damage expert. I just said that I'm going to come with. And what we have to grind some and trace roots for an extremely, uh, far distance. Javier did not seem to think that was the case in this scenario and that he was given quite a dignity on those trees being able to stay.
Who's the report from?
So Javier, Javier said, well, he was impressed with the sale.
Did he, did he say anything as long as we showed that we needed some work, like maybe addressing growing and they. Passed the inspection and then allows to pick forward, apparently it's been a status quo for a while.
Yeah, it's been for years, we've kind of pushed it down the road, but.
Well, there's a difference between the, the actual dam and. The area where the trail is, they're not this, it's not a part of the dam. It's a, I forget the term they use.
Spillway.
It's not the spillway, it's a. That's a different term. It's the reason that we've been able to not address some of those larger trees is because it isn't part of the dam.
Within the twenty five feet clear and it's.
Yeah, there's a, what they call it, there's the.
So it's not part of the dam, but they're trying to make. So it looks, sounds like we've squeezed by without having to do anything about it because it, there's some wiggle room there.
Yeah.
At least we address the main, the parts that are on the embankment and that are on the dam, but maybe they will. Allow the each tree, I think is what Jam said, pretty large that are, are there. But the other thing is the, um, structure that's within the water. Has a lot of vegetation and that that needs to be cleaned out and I'm guessing like a flat bottomed boat.
Yeah, he did, he did a little bit of that, but I don't think he got it all the way. He did some of those. Spillway town.
Yeah, there's a, the, the reason I mentioned this, I, I was involved years past when we. Had the grant that created the walkway and there's, as I said, there's a difference between the dam itself of which. Anything related to the dam is super highly. But the stuff on the, where the walkway that goes up is not. Part of that and I think going back to this would be, I think you guys talked.
Oh, but how old is that name?
I believe it would be from the seventies, I think, whenever, whenever the flood.
This is the same time. Eleven.
It did be ninety eighty seven, eighty seven. Well, so that is an inspection phase, okay.
So I would, I would definitely see some of the trees are older than the dam, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean, the, the trees that are, they're, because it's very strict, I mean, the rules about. The dam inspector, who's a dam inspector, the. Is, uh, he's, it's very important that we so honor. Technical dam, but this, this, it does get just some interest to see here.
Maybe we should reach out to somebody, have them come down there to be careful. That will be at first hand, what the recommendation is.
And that's what she.
Yeah, I'll do that. And then, um, I also asked, um. The engineer that we were meeting with today about, um, if there were any type of. Grants and so he explained two different grants that we could possibly, um, apply for, but he also said because of all the, um. The financial, I guess, government, you know, coming back on grants and things like that. He said normally it would be, um, a fifty fifty match, but probably this year it would be more like a thirty. Um, percent match and that we would have to pay everything and then we, um, apply and ask them for the provision of that.
Well, it seems like if they let it, they let it slide all these years, you don't want to do it unless you absolutely have to. Especially if it's not affecting the, the dam system and let it slide because of that in the past. Otherwise, you define yourself in, in a, it's a current expense which you really don't have to do and. And boy, don't want to do because of the cost involved. But all you all, you know, everybody knows, I don't think they would have built a dam with those big trees there and get away, whatever. Whatever is going on, it sounds like it was, if we, it's not affecting structural safety of the dam per se. Is that your impression?
Well, again, the, there's a difference between the, what's built. Where the dam itself is and the. Younger trees that encroach upon that, that actually do go into.
That's a difference.
Those need, that will be on both sides too, there's.
So that's all. I did ask, um, Hurt and Profit engineer to send me all the documents. Um, and Melody was able to find some of the original, like two of them, um, for the permit. So, um, I have that available if you, you guys have not looked at it. And then also lastly, with so much paper, can you all tell me whether you want, um. You want these packages of, of documents or there are some that you'd rather look at it online and you want to look at it on the screen and not have it printed?
I'd rather have that online. Yeah, we finally just the turn to the agenda, anything else will be online. Yeah, that's what we do with the minutes.
I had to grab that, get a little.
I know. Yeah, we can cut back on paper, I think.
Put everything online, so you.
Okay, so yes, on printed agenda. Does three of you want it online?
Do whatever the Jordan is.
Yeah, me too. I'm saving, saving some paper in office print. Important.
I'm an old fashioned, I'm a person that I like the paper, but I understand, I mean, every time I, you know, we're printing, I'm like, oh my God, it's not in color. They miss something here or there. And what do you want?
Oh, I'm fine with that, um, as you said, there are two of us. Um, so I didn't bring out more than different. So we're probably, you know, getting a friend of the agenda.
I just wanted to know what y'all want, so.
It sounds like we are agreement, get us the agenda and then the other, uh, others online and then. I, to whatever public documents there would need to be, that's. The project would need to have some friendly offices here.
For public.
Right, perfect.
I think the agenda probably will dictate what we get printed out, what we're doing anyway.
Especially if we get it in by Thursday.
Yeah. By Thursday. Sir, if you're happy, we are happy.
Yeah, I like to have a piece of paper in front of me. So I can make notes. Okay, where are we all this agenda now?
New topics.
Been talking about everything.
There's a couple of new topics that I'd like to bring up, but, uh.
So, what are we going to do about this, uh? Visual meeting thing? Discuss it at the council meeting and vote on implementing it, if that you want to. Nobody, and you require my state hall to have it.
I don't know that you require, I think that it's just.
Just a safeguard.
A re, repeat of the, uh, planning commission meeting.
Yes.
It's just an extra measure.
Maybe he doesn't know what happened or did he say?
Have you heard what happened?
Jeff and what?
Well, that was, yeah.
I think it makes sense.
I think the, well, when these, during COVID, when you, you had your first Zoom meetings, they were allowed. The lieutenant governor put out guidelines and basically it says, yeah, you have. You know, what changes, I said, I don't know.
Yeah, somebody, and somebody drove in on one of our meetings one time, remember, sometimes just making crazy noises and stuff.
Yeah, it's been a few years ago.
Yeah. It wasn't quite as exciting as Dan's meetings.
Please don't call it mine.
It's not exciting.
Anyhow, okay. So you've talked about, we've touched on the cell tower lease, anything else on that? Just, you're working on it, that's the main thing?
Yes.
Okay, so you want to get into the, uh, law more, do you, discussion again?
Well, can we go back to new topics? There's two that I have, uh, and ones that the police could weigh in on a little bit, it could be brief, I guess, but the. He, I, I found out about this grant that, uh, we might be able to use for the levy. You want, can you? Talk about that, the BDM grant or whatever that we might be able to use?
So last year, when Ms. Marsh was a part of council, we put together the, uh. Media brand, Virginia Department of Emergency Maintenance Spring. What we ended up finding out is we had to have a pass through like Alamo County, if you ran and be able to get funding passed through to them, the bugs. Um, I don't know, Elizabeth, if that grant is planned yet. But we should begin, apparently the votes, August, September timeframe with that grant being released. Maybe, and I don't know what Javier had done with Melody, but I know that grant was put together and it was ready to be submitted. I think the only thing we would need to do for Elizabeth is just look at it and see. About applying for the, uh, particular levy grant, right? And I'm not sure if it's specific or it might just, I, I'm not sure, I'm just guessing if that grant will.
October first.
October first?
Yeah, twenty twenty five.
I know we applied for it for generators, chainsaws and things like that. But I'm not sure that we didn't bring it with this one.
Apply for that? Okay, all right, it's just something to explore anyway.
I know Elizabeth and I did speak about, uh, reaching out to Alamo or you all had your joint meeting with the, uh, board supervisors. They were looking for additional information, with the specifics on the repairs to the levy law. And her and I've spoken, I think, uh, you know, just putting that information to them. Maybe getting it to Mike Pruitt, so he could, or maybe that will help them make a decision on whether or not to give the town the fund.
One of the things, chief, it might not be a bad idea. And Mr. Mayor, I've, I've brought this to your direction and all of us has said, that we actually ask them for money. In other words, we have a certain amount of money, not just saying, hey, can you give us money? We would like you to give us eighty thousand dollars or we'd like to give you whatever, or we want them to pay for the whole thing. So, so I think on this issue of new topics, I think it's. Something we can talk to our town administrator, we look at the numbers, we communicate with our. Supervisor, but we specifically ask for a, a set amount of money.
I think the number was about eighty eight thousand dollars to do the, uh. Not the renovations, but the upkeep for the levy wall. And I think from what I remember, uh, this McKeel saying. We need more information, what's the problem? You know, what, what money do we need to fix this problem? How, how can we, the board help the town with, with the issue? I think we just need to put some data together of what the problem is. How much is it going to cost and submit it to maybe Mr. Pruitt. And get it to the board supervisor for review and approval. It sounds like they'll approve the money. Just we need to put the data together or the information together so they can give for them and they can vote.
Does that make sense in terms of town south? So I think that's great to what you just said, and I mean, I think.
That was just my recollection of the.
Yeah, yeah. I think you're good. Do you want to take action on this next Monday or next meeting, whenever we decide?
I think as soon as we can take action on it, it will make a lot of sense.
Very, you have your fingers.
Well, I know Javier had a company come down and. Detail out what needed done and how much and one part of it. One part of it was thirty three thousand and then one part of it, I do believe, which was the pump house. In fixing the rebar and everything in the pump house was fifty five thousand. So I will have to see if we can find his.
I think the way it was broke down is like in three phases. The cheapest was maybe, if I remember correctly, it's fifteen something. For painting inside of the pump walls and that kind of stuff.
Well, good, bad idea, just go ahead, just like you said, like the council just said, within a lot of requests of this amount and, uh, you know. If you really have to get to it, you can always sit there and say, you know, I may go behind all this to protect life and property. The last thing to do to hear is Alamo County, uh, not wanting to participate in helping to their life and property.
Problems. I, why are we going to spend Alamo's money to help fix this thing? So. Finding Javier's list of what the problem was from that contractor, what the problem is. I don't get, nobody did, do you remember? Did he ever? Get anything from the Corps of Engineering on what? Get anything from the Corps of Engineering on what the problems was or?
I have to be, I have his drive. Um, and was able to access some of that today.
Okay.
So.
So some of that information might not be a bad start.
And Chief, maybe, maybe even as you have. Knowledge on it, it's no secret to all of us that this is the biggest difficulty we are facing going into this new budget. And if we can address this upfront and get help from the county. It alleviates many other problems. So it helps us in. Other issues with trying to cover the needs that we have for staff or also to make sure that we can address. Other issues that come up, so.
It sounds like he has all the information. He was just gonna break it into segments, make it more affordable. But then go ahead and ask for it all now and say, here's the reason why. No, it just sounds like materials all there.
But may- maybe the point I'm mostly saying is. Let's ask for all, but let's ask for it. And let's follow through and let us know who you need help with from. I I think Council Heisen, you you brought up, which is a good idea. Are there others? Does everybody agree with this? No disagreement on it?
The problem that Javier was having was we only have one company that could give him in. An estimate, nobody else would come out and give us an estimate. So hopefully there's somebody. I don't know, we'll have to look.
So treated, treated as a sole source.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's every now and then be an expert.
One nurse will come back with the information and gave us this price and here, you've done your due diligence once you've actually asked for companies.
Chief was just mentioning, I think, did y'all hear about?
I think, Melody, you know, you've done your due diligence, Javier did, as long as you have the. Names of the other two companies or the other companies that he had reached out to. If they chose not to submit a a bid back on it, then you've done your due diligence as a help. I think you admit the possibility, be personally confirmed, but if they're the only company after you put out. Work needing to be done and they're the only company can come back with a bid and you know what?
Well, because the town is under an ex- that's population, they're not under the procurement act anyhow. But this just satisfies the board supervisors since it's done more than the bare minimum of trying to figure out the cost of it. So that information very, you'd want to include that. As you mentioned.
I I think you can move forward with the one bid, Melody. But get, but you gotta get the county's board supervisors. The information, that's kind of where I thought we were at when we had that joint meeting and I don't think Javier left. Shortly after that meeting, so I don't, I I know no information like you and I talked, that was ever put forward. To the board supervisors for consideration.
And and that was the time to do it because it's very early in the budget formation system.
I remember them saying.
That starts kind of in September or whatnot, but if you get off, get your foot in the door and you. It won't be a surprise, they can't just say, well, we can't do it this year, do it next year, that kind of stuff.
Well, their budget's already done, knocked out, right? They may be able to come up with the additional monies to be able to help town with it.
Well, they might be able to put it in your budget sign.
They'll start their budget planning.
Yeah.
I was just telling Melody, I received an email today from. That a gentleman said that they originally put in the pump system. Years ago or something like that and wanted to um. To provide a budget or a proposal for maintenance. So I was like, yes, I'm hopefully send it, so.
We have it every year. I I have the budget from the last year or the proposal from last year.
All right, I got one more uh new business and I won't take a lot of time, but I've already written uh. Elizabeth about this, but I can share it with everybody, but. Um, and I think it is a concern, maybe not to everybody, but to me it is. Uh, the public restrooms are in our town are not open regularly. In fact, they're only open about a half, half a day a week and they used to be open all summer long. And I I go to the park a lot and I see people there and and, you know, they they go in there and they try to use the bathrooms, they can't get in. And, you know, they could go to the Alamo County, but it's it's not accessible, they could go to the tavern. And I just feel like it was, it's it's been traditionally that we had it open all summer long and we closed it during the winter. And I just feel like that's a bathroom we should take care of the tourists and just for the common good. So anyway, I'll write everybody my reasonings and. The other one is the uh, the Canal Basin Square, I think that should be open every weekend, all weekend long. That's when the tourists come. I was there the other day and there was a bunch of tourists and they could go to those porta potties, but. They're not very comfortable, especially women don't like those things. I know my, my wife and kids don't like the, going to those porta potties enough. I just feel like we have these bathrooms, let's use them, take care of the public. And the tourists here and then close them during the winter and let, you know, that, but. We, years ago, you you know, we, the 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 maintenance guy didn't wanna clean them and we heard. That he's liked to clean the bathrooms, but uh, you know, I think that that that's a pain in the neck, but I think it's just. Proper to have public for bathrooms.
Yeah, it's unreasonable.
Okay, anyway, I'll write my reasoning and they, you know, I was, during the, during the fourth of July. The uh, the Canal Basin Square was closed and during the Batto Festival, the ones up at the park were closed and. And these events we have, you know, it's, you need overflow, you just need overflow and and nice bathrooms, you know, not just these porta potty things. Anyway, I'll I'll write everybody about that.
Well, if they're bathroom open all weekend, weekend, who, who will be?
Well, that's what we we need to come up with a schedule and plan for opening. I I know the key and I, I open it when I do the food pantry and I close it afterwards. But I I just feel like they, they should be open all the time because some- sometimes people are not always, and I know, uh, Amelie opens it and closes it. But, you know, that's used throughout the day on a Saturday and a Sunday and, uh, but we don't have a real s- schedule. I think. The the chief done a few, have you ever opened them, closed them?
Back before the combination.
Yeah, he did some of that too, but I, we need to come up with a plan for that, you know, but right, if we wanna close them. I think closing them at night might be worthwhile, considering that, but.
We were getting some vandal.
Yeah, right, right. Right, and that's usually at night, yeah. But anyway, I'll help uh, open and close them a little bit, but anyway, I. I don't wanna spend a lot of time on that, but I just feel like we should take care of the public. You know, I I've, women with kids or, you know, you got the handicap spot there, you can go there, you let your kid out, go to the bathroom and. You can't take them over to the Canal, uh, Alamo County as easily.
I do have a question, um, or one thing under new, if that's okay. Jam is going on vacation from the seventeenth. To the thirtieth, I think. I have Barnett pick up the trash, but he can only do it on Wednesdays. I guess I need your input as to what do you wanna do about the other days? Is there somebody that could possibly drive the truck? And we can have a volunteer pick up the garbage? Is there?
I hope you would like it too.
Okay. Because I know, you know, Fridays, you're gonna have, or Saturdays will have market and then Mondays, everything's gonna be overflowing and. So. That would be great if we could do that.
Well, Monday's the most important after that.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to talk anything about what council wants to put with that other truck out there or just?
Uh, something we need to talk about. Yeah, the next worst, yeah. Should have, you should be touring around and new and. Then we can decide what we're gonna do.
Does it make sense to keep that as a uh, backup vehicle for you guys?
I think it was talked about as having it as a uh, a a spare vehicle, yes. I I know the conversation was. Um, before Jim got a other vehicle based on market and put it in the maintenance. Now that maintenance has a vehicle, Elizabeth and I spoke a little bit about this the other day, um. If council is not opposed to it, then we consider just keeping it in police department's fleet as a spare.
We'll have three vehicles, right? You only have three police vehicles, you're talking to uh.
We've got five total.
It's bad.
We've got a white unmarked horse, the sergeant uses that. We've got the drone vehicle that John Ball has all of the drone equipped.
Okay.
We've got the one I drive, the one Brad drives and the one that Jacobson will drive once he gets out of the cabin.
And so, right. So you were with a start with top of that name? And you have a two four timer, two four time, got four.
Yeah, and then we've got that one that John uses for the drone operator.
I think it's a good idea for backup stuff.
Yeah, if nothing else, you can work it around town.
Yeah, I don't think. Thinking about selling a truck, I don't think you're gonna get as much. Maybe, I could be wrong on that, but I don't think.
I have a little bit of research on it, you know, it varies, you know, you could probably get eight, maybe ten hour. Uh, it depends, but you gotta also think about the cost of taking all of these, we should put it down, unstriping it and all the blue lights and stuff all of it, so. I don't know, something to think about.
I can have second map to put it in there, put it in the form chart there. I don't know if it's legal or not, but I'm seeing that people driving, slay down and.
What I found when I first come in here is parking those cars around town, they were being beat up. Mirrors knocked off, it was bad. That's why I'm not faking it.
Well, some of the drivers around there could probably use remediation, drive like, oh, but you know.
All right, let's move on. Okay, what time are you here, Mark?
Yeah.
I'll be here early in the morning.
Okay, so I just need to catch up with you and bring you up to speed on the apartment.
Oh, okay.
I had, I had a. Voicemail from Brad the other day.
I'll give you a shout.
Yeah, I'll be around.
Okay. Okay, if anyone else needs attention for that.
All right, where are we on this agenda?
So tall? Groundskeeping equipment, is that what that is?
Yeah.
We talked about. The lawnmower blowing up the other day. Die, whatever you want. Elizabeth has uh, four options, it's been presented and uh, do you want to? Go over those or do you want to? Basically, it's it's pretty easy, it's like buy a new lawnmower. Buy a new engine for the old lawnmower, buy a used lawnmower or. Get Tim to cut the grass. Now, here's right, here's my thinking on it, then y'all welcome in this free fall. I don't think we need ten thousand dollar lawnmower. Okay, there. I'm not sure that we need a five thousand dollar lawnmower. I talked to Jam today and said, how about this? If Tim Carr were put into writing that he will cut the grass every other week for two hundred dollars a shot. Through the end of grass season, next spring, let's look at our, let's look at our lawnmower situation. And that would free up Jam to do anything else you need him to do since he wouldn't have to cut grass. That's just what, that's just my opinion. Um, I know, see, we we voted, you, the council voted to s- spend up to ten thousand dollars. For lawnmower by bar and call.
If needed.
But I don't, I I really don't think we need a ten thousand dollar or five thousand dollar lawnmower. I wouldn't go over three thousand dollars.
I think that. Our standard lawnmower would do just fine for what he needs to do.
I have a one I paid twenty eight hundred dollars for a little John deer and it does.
Being that he's going on vacation, I think that no matter what, we should talk to Tim about.
If you can get Tim's to.
He said he would do, he could do the Al basin square, he could do farmers market and then, uh, I guess, um. The other one I thou- thought he was talking about was Bruce Park, so I don't know if he was including, um. Van Cleef. I forgot all about that one, uh, so I'm not sure if that's. It might be more now too, because he's, he's, he's part of a new company now too, but that was about two months ago, he, or. Or at least a month ago, he mentioned that, so I'll get him, so for the, for all the grass in the, in the.
What, whatever he, whatever he wants to do for two hundred to.
Sure.
And bring it before the council as soon as he can and then we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
I'm just not in favor for. Here halfway through the grass cutting season to buy expensive mower and then store it in the garage.
I agree. You know, it might be good just to at least see how he does when jams away, you know, how that works, um. Because he's gonna be away for two weeks, so maybe we could start with that and say, hey. What do you think?
I I do like the mayor's idea, I I agree with the father. I have some of my coworkers that cut grass on the side for a living. And I can tell you from experience, I've worked with them. A ten thousand dollar lawnmower requires more maintenance than a regular homeowner style lawnmower, uh. Again, you had said at previous meeting before that there were things. Do you like to see being done around the town and you were concerned about what, uh, how Jam was using it in time and. Felt like there was some other projects that were not getting around to. I think it's a good idea to free him up and, you know, again, here we are. Closer to the end of uh, July. In all reality, you got August and half of September, people pretty much stopped cutting grass before October. They just, that is a lot of money. To wait next year to see how things go, that's fine. By letting somebody else do it, we don't have to take care of the gas, we don't have to take care of the maintenance or whatever, you pay somebody else to do it. All that problem is there.
And then we can see how the budget's running and then, you know, might have the extra money to buy three thousand dollar lawnmower, who knows?
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Is that all right, everybody?
What is, what is this a thought on? You were moving over there, I I thought you'd wait to take that, might wait for you.
Okay, anything else before we go into?
All I'm gonna say is y'all have a.
Anything else?
Well, I I, there's, there was one other thing that I I had for the new topics. And I I maybe we could make, take action on it next week. Because I just feel like we should need some closure. We, we had people speaking about parking, we had the Chamber of Commerce speaking about parking. It's not about loading and we talked about in government service, you know, does the town or does the gov- does a council wanna go forward? With looking at, we don't have to decide, I just, just do, do we wanna go for forward looking at a uh. Some sort of restrictions for parking for customers, I mean, for, for the businesses and if not. Let's end it and we'll say we're not, we're gonna leave it like it is. We changed parking about. A a year or two ago, there was two hour parking and we got rid of all the two hour parking sound signs. And there's unintended consequences. As a result, there are people parking, for example, all of us could park on the street right now. Forever, we we wouldn't have to be removed. We could, we could take up every space here, we could take up ten spaces there and there would be no. No way of regulating that unless we come up with something and their concerns are real, you know, the fact that. Somebody's parking in, a customer's parking, I mean, in a customer place. And sometimes to stay there for days, you know, I think it's a concern. If I was a businessman, I would be concerned, I don't know. So I, I think. At, at the least. I would think we could, uh, and I talked a little bit about this, send a letter out to all the. Residents or not all residents, but the, the, this home, the, the people in town, that's to. Just be considerate, do not stay in a parking lot if, unless you're a customer.
I have such a letter that went out before.
Oh, good. That would be the place to start, rather than making. Rather than making an ordinance, I think that'd be good to do that and it's, and and otherwise, because otherwise, there was, she's zoning administrator, she could say like, you can't park here. And I guess there are some regulations, but who knows what they are, I mean.
Is the issue. Send a letter out or, I don't know, legal side of putting something under someone's windshield wiper is.
Yes.
I think that's gonna save us a lot of time and frustration.
To say, hey, you've been here for two days, can you move your car?
It is a good idea, you do have a valid point and, you know. From what I've gathered, from me riding up and down, I've listened to, I've listened to citizens come up here and say whatever. I think that right now the best course of action, this is speaking for me, now I don't speak for everybody. I think the best course of action is that we ask somebody, business owners. To find other places to park in front of their own business. I just don't see how. You can complain about not having enough parking, well, you. You can complain about not having enough parking where you're taking your vehicle and parking it up front.
Right with.
What's more important, the employees or the uh, customers? And I mean, maybe we just ask your business owner. Hey, let's try to see what you can do as a business owner first. Give them food, chew three months. They can't rectify the problem. Will we visit?
Well, it's, it's just not this is over, it's, it's asking the uh, the tenants, the residents who, who are renters.
I didn't want to bring their names up.
No, the renters too have to.
I've seen Mr. and Mrs. Goodman parking in front of a little beef store quite often. Their vehicles are there more than anybody else. And then to sit here and let them come up here and say, well, we can't, our people can't park it, they can't do this to that.
Yeah, right. I should be everybody.
I don't know how to have starved a farmer that you're creating.
No, I don't know either.
I'm, I'm not there you, but I'm there.
Right, that's, that they're there, right, okay. But it started with, you know, asking people to cooperate maybe.
I'll give you a copy of that letter and then you can, we could maybe see about, it's because it's. Least ten years, twelve years old, maybe older than that.
That'd be great.
We send it out and then you can rewrite it to suit today's atmosphere and uh, we'll send it out.
Sure, with a shot, yeah, sure.
Okay, uh, anything else before we do the close session? With the list, we have to read off to do the close. Yeah, we have to read off. No, I thought we had to read a certain thing going. Somebody has to make a motion to go into close session, somebody has to serve.
Town councils have to convene a closed session to discuss.
You need to read the code section, this is reading.
As permitted by Virginia Code two dot two dash thirty seven eleven A one, a personal matter involving. Salaries that were included in the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six budgets.
Then you need to adjutant, the county employees you're talking about, I don't know if it's your main, you can be said. Town clerk, town administrators, town policeman, whoever you're talking about.
I don't know.
Well.
All of course, all of course. There's only three.
Well, I, I, maybe you should make the thing, I didn't want. It's insufficient, okay.
You need to say, if it's done correctly, you're even getting troubles.
All right, well, I'll pass.
We already made a motion.
Well, I didn't, I didn't finish.
He's withdrawing it.
I'm not the one who wants the meeting, that's just my point. I was just trying to be nice, but I didn't finish it all. Yeah, what, what did that? Oh, because I don't know, I don't know what y'all want to talk about.
Well, I think all, I think the. All top employees, I think, it's all the top employees, the police.
You want to make a motion?
Okay, wh- where is it? Here?
Bill? Can we all read?
Oh, I moved that the town council, Scott's certified the close session, just can, no, wait, okay, I moved that the town council. Convening close session to discuss the uh, the salaries.
No, we have to read the code section.
Oh, okay, as permitted by Virginia Code two point two, three, seven, one, one, eight, one, a personal matter involving. Salaries for all talent employees. And job descriptions.
And who are the county employees you're talking about?
The, the, the town, okay, the, the town administrator, the town clerk, the town uh. Maintenance person and the, and the, the uh, police chief and all the police officers.
Do we include?
Melody, okay, yeah, I mean, yeah, not only.
She's not an employee.
Well, she is.
No, she's not an employee.
She's contracted, right?
What did she get, a ten nine nine?
No, no, come back to you.
She's an employee.
Okay, then, then. And the, the market manager as well.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? We have to do a roll call on all this, we're just.